Good evening, everyone. Today is November 18th, Wednesday, November 18th. This is regularly scheduled school committee meeting. We'd like to begin our meeting with a salute to the flag. Would all please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Mayor Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Ms. Leary?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Here.
Seven present.
Seven present. Before we get into the regularly scheduled agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Schlickman to present an award to a member of the committee. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. Suspend the rules. All of those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. Our chair would like to recognize the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. The MASCE had asked us to deliver something on their behalf, and Mr. Schlickman, who is one of our administrators, happens to also be a member of the MASCE, so he has accepted to deliver that message. And I will turn it over to Mr. Schlickman.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Paul Schlickman. I chair the school committee in Arlington, and I'm a past president of the Mass Association of School Committees. The board has asked me to come here today, and they're not paying mileage, because they are pleased to recognize Connie Martin, an eight-term member of the Lowell School Committee, as an all-state school committee member for 2015. As a school committee member, she has focused on reducing class size as the route to higher levels of student achievement, and, in so doing, has raised important issues about Lowell's growing diverse populations. Connie Martin is a St. Michael's College and University of Massachusetts graduate who, when not at the school committee table, can be found working for the organization Community Teamwork, an anti-poverty initiative that works on behalf of vulnerable area residents. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, I am pleased to present this plaque in recognition of her selection as an all-state school committee member for 2015. Connie, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the committee.
If I could just add my thanks.
Ms. Martin, I can tell you're so happy with this.
There you go. I thank you all. That is very kind of you. Thank you very much, Mr. Schlickman, for delivering this to me. I have to say, I think it really is a longevity award more than anything else, having survived 16 years. You know, I suppose I should get a plaque. But I certainly appreciate being singled out this way. It was very, very kind. I know what happened through, I believe, the superintendent's offices, so I appreciate that very much. Regretfully, I wasn't able to attend the event on the Cape, but I certainly do appreciate the honor and the plaque and the expert delivery. And I thank you all. It's been, as you all know how I feel, it's been an extraordinary experience, having the honor to serve on Lowell School Committee. I'd do it without the plaque. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And those are the plaques, those are the awards that we give to those individuals that would do without that. So we thank you, Mr. Schlickman, and congratulations, Ms. Martin. Well deserved.
Just real quick, may I?
I'm sorry, Ms. Leary?
No, I just want to say, this is an opportunity for a few words for Ms. Martin, who's done 16 years of being on the school committee. I've served with her for almost 10 of those in the next month, and it's been, you know, working with her, I've learned a lot. She's one of the leaders in curriculum, someone who knows not only the vernacular, but the deep meaning of what it's all about. And more importantly, she's got a great sense of humor. So she can, we've sat together, what, the first four years of our committee tenure, and we basically laughed our way through four years. But I've learned a lot, and I think it's an honor that's well deserved. And I think congratulations is in order, and I think it's about time that they recognize her, because she's done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leary. Okay, very good. So we will now proceed to the regularly scheduled agenda. The first item, we have minutes. We have approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, November 4th. Motion to accept the minutes and place on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye, and the opposed, those meeting minutes are accepted and placed on file. I do like to recognize Mr. DiCotto. Congratulations, newly elected member of the school committee, who's in the audience this evening. And I would like to recognize a young man in our audience who is here. I'm going to ask you to come up. I'm going to put you on the spot. Just introduce yourself and let us know what achievement that you are working towards, if that's okay?
My name is Ben Gaster. I'm living Lowell. I'm from Troop 74 in Shelford. I'm actually here just to check things out and see how things run in a meeting. It's a requirement for a couple of mayor badges. Just looking for an issue with difference in opinion, so if you could give a little bit, that'd be good. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that I had you come up to speak. We won't let you down, and I think you earned your public speaking badge tonight by being called on a moment's notice. Well, welcome, and welcome to your mom.
This is my mother, Roxanne.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you. It was a good way to start the meeting off. I'm sure we won't let you down.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll proceed to permission to enter. We have permission to enter on November 18th. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Antonelli to present.
Good evening. I would recommend that the school committee approve permission to enter requests for the following companies and universities. The first is Mill City Grows Inc. in the amount of $70,112. Next is Edutron Inc. in the amount of $68,275. Fitchburg State University in the amount of $14,150. All three of those, by the way, are for professional development opportunities and are funded through grants. We also have the Massachusetts State Science and Engineering Fair in the amount of $12,300. University of Massachusetts in the amount of $14,247. John Boothsellers in the amount of $6,000. And Hummingbird Transportation LLC in the amount of $13,125. There's one more, and that is Vanpool Transportation LLC in the amount of $38,850.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonelli. Questions, comments on permission to enter?
With approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, well, that concludes our permission to enter. We'll now move on to the memorials. We have a memorial for Patricia Pat Lovus, retired Laurelly School Clerk. Chair would like to recognize Ms. Leary as well for a memorial.
Please, we'd also like to recognize former city manager and state senator Joseph Tully, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leary. Anything further? Could we all please rise for a moment of silence, and could we please dock in the chambers? May they rest in peace. We'll proceed to the motion section of the agenda. The first motion of the evening, we have a motion by Ms. Martin requesting that the administration provide a report on the number of public school teachers who live outside the district but have enrolled their children in Lowell Public Schools. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Ms. Martin?
Actually, I would say, since we have the very similar motion coming up on number three, I'm more than happy to have the discussion in one place.
Okay, motion to suspend and take both items together by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye, and the opposed, those meeting minutes are accepted and placed on file. I do like to recognize Mr. DiCotto. Congratulations, newly elected member of the school committee, who's in the audience this evening. And I would like to recognize a young man in our audience who is here. I'm going to ask you to come up. I'm going to put you on the spot. Just introduce yourself and let us know what achievement that you are working towards, if that's okay?
My name is Ben Gaster. I'm living Lowell. I'm from Troop 74 in Shelford. I'm actually here just to check things out and see how things run in a meeting. It's a requirement for a couple of mayor badges. Just looking for an issue with difference in opinion, so if you could give a little bit, that'd be good. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that I had you come up to speak. We won't let you down, and I think you earned your public speaking badge tonight by being called on a moment's notice. Well, welcome, and welcome to your mom.
This is my mother, Roxanne.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Thank you. It was a good way to start the meeting off. I'm sure we won't let you down.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll proceed to permission to enter. We have permission to enter on November 18th. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Antonelli to present.
Good evening. I would recommend that the school committee approve permission to enter requests for the following companies and universities. The first is Mill City Grows Inc. in the amount of $70,112. Next is Edutron Inc. in the amount of $68,275. Fitchburg State University in the amount of $14,150. All three of those, by the way, are for professional development opportunities and are funded through grants. We also have the Massachusetts State Science and Engineering Fair in the amount of $12,300. University of Massachusetts in the amount of $14,247. John Boothsellers in the amount of $6,000. And Hummingbird Transportation LLC in the amount of $13,125. There's one more, and that is Vanpool Transportation LLC in the amount of $38,850.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonelli. Questions, comments on permission to enter?
With approval.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, well, that concludes our permission to enter. We'll now move on to the memorials. We have a memorial for Patricia Pat Lovus, retired Laurelly School Clerk. Chair would like to recognize Ms. Leary as well for a memorial.
Please, we'd also like to recognize former city manager and state senator Joseph Tully, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leary. Anything further? Could we all please rise for a moment of silence, and could we please dock in the chambers? May they rest in peace. We'll proceed to the motion section of the agenda. The first motion of the evening, we have a motion by Ms. Martin requesting that the administration provide a report on the number of public school teachers who live outside the district but have enrolled their children in Lowell Public Schools. Seconded by Mr. Leary, Ms. Martin?
Actually, I would say, since we have the very similar motion coming up on number three, I'm more than happy to have the discussion in one place.
Okay, motion to suspend and take both items together by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. We'll also take item number eight, motion by Ms. Rossikowicz and Ms. Scott, request the superintendent furnish the committee with a report on the number of out-of-state district students placed in Lowell Public Schools, namely those whose parents work in the district and are non-residents, and if found out of compliance with policies of the district, facilitate a plan for compliance. No second necessary. Ms. Martin? And Ms. Rossikowicz, and Ms. Scott?
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, just obviously, I suspect we all are responding to a constituent concern. I will say for myself, I'm curious, particularly around the number, just to see how large a number we're really dealing with. I want to be clear that I am in favor of us continuing with at least the past practice. I know that we're looking for some additional information so we can see the actual policies that drive this, and I have not seen them, so I don't know how or where they exist. And I know that it's the intention for this, to be able to get that information for us to make some decisions moving forward. For myself, as I say, I support this past practice. I would want us to be able to continue offering this to our school staff, but I do think we need to, at the very least, get a handle on exactly what the numbers are in terms of how many students we do have in the district, and secondarily, to determine what the policies are that are in place. And if not, then we need to memorialize and go through this process. So that is my contention and my request in looking at the motions.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Rossikowicz?
Thank you, Mayor. And I echo my colleagues' thoughts and comments, but my biggest concern with this is not necessarily, well, my biggest concern is that out-of-district students are actually taking slots, seats, that actually would go to children who actually live in families, that actually live in those neighborhoods in the city. You know, we're seeing, and again, we're responding to some constituent concerns, is that while their children are waitlisted, they wound up having to actually put their children into a middle school in another town. And so we're paying for that, to actually send children out of district to be accommodated in a middle school. So that's a larger concern for me, you know, I think for all of us. So, yeah, obviously, I don't think it's huge in the way of numbers. I think it's a manageable number, but I think it's certainly warranted to look at policy and to ensure that we're prioritizing our own residents over out-of-district placements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossikowicz. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also echo my colleagues' sentiments, that I do believe that I do not have an issue with teachers' children attending the Lowell Public Schools, space permitting. We've been in a space crunch the last few years. We've opted not to allow school choice due to those, you know, we took a vote on this floor not to allow it. I cannot imagine how any children were allowed to enter our schools the last few years in schools that have waitlists for Lowell Public School students. So space permitting, you get points for living in a certain neighborhood. I don't know how certain schools that have been on waitlists could have children of staff in those schools. They do not get those points for living in the neighborhood. So I don't really understand how it didn't go against our policies that we have in place of placement. So I look forward to seeing the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossikowicz. Mr. Conway? And then Ms. Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that these motions are good to take a look at how we accept students from individuals that work in our system. And I think it's actually, it's a good model. It shows the public that if we're willing to teach or work in the city and then also bring their own children in, I think that's a real positive thing. However, when we talk about the elementary and the middle school, it does become an issue if you happen to have a parent that cannot put their child in a school, and they have to take a secondary one or a third. I think that's, at the high school level, it's not a problem. I don't see it as a problem, but certainly in the elementary and the middle school, it could be a concern for those people that are on the waitlist. They obviously should get preference of the school of their choice. But again, I'd like to see it continue, certainly in some form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway and Ms. Leary.
Just to really echo that, I think my understanding is there's about 20 to 21, maybe 25, 37. So most of them should probably be at the high school, I would think. Those are the only ones I've ever learned of, but I think that's a good idea to really identify where they are, because if it's something where you're at the high school, that's not a major issue, because actually, our numbers are down at the high school. But if it's something where someone's trying to get into, say, the Wang, where the Wang is a school that's always having challenges just fitting to McAvenue and the Petucketville Memorial, that's a major, major issue. If there's a, I never heard of students where parents might live in, say, Centerville, and they teach at, you know, say, I don't know, at the Washington School, they may have their kids go out of district. That makes some sense, because you're actually a citizen of the city. But if you're someone who's actually living in Palom, teaching and coming in and taking up the space of a resident, I would personally have a major problem with that. But I think we need to tease out exactly what the numbers are, where they're at. Was it an issue where somebody, you know, had a problem, they couldn't get in? That's a problem. And I think we need to remedy that, because that's not the intent. The intent is for the citizens to get first space choice in these schools, not for someone who's living outside the school. And if it's something where there is an opportunity to come in, then yeah, I think definitely we should continue with the policy. I think, though, most of it should be at the high school, but we should definitely look at the numbers to verify. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Ms. Scott?
Just one more area to look at, is whether or not we're incurring any additional costs for these students to be in our school system, what kind of services they're receiving. I know there's towns that put, you know, they allow this type of agreement, but they put limits on the services that the students receive if they come in district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Martin, could you just take the mic for a second? I just had a few questions for the superintendent.
Chair recognizes Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. I'm out of vice chair. So, Mr. Superintendent, is the issue primarily at the high school? Is that where the, sort of the aggregate, the big numbers are with these students that are their parents and teachers?
We have a total of about 37.
37?
Just got the report yesterday.
Okay. Do we see, is it trending? Is it trending upwards? Is it trending downwards?
I can't answer that. I'm sorry, because I didn't bring that with me, but I don't think it's, I've seen names of schools all over. It's not just a high school.
Okay. So we do have a waiting list of, at some schools, for parents, taxpayers, and I agree with the motion. I think that people that live in the city, that pay taxes in the city, they want their children to go, and we talked about neighborhood schools and the benefits of it as well. So it's, you know, it's a concern when we get these complaints that this is occurring. And I guess the question is, how do we ensure that it doesn't happen again, that, you know, that parents are priority, they're given priority number one to send their children to those neighborhood schools? And then, you know, if there are openings thereafter, then okay, then we can accommodate. So, you know, can you look at that, or is that something you've looked at?
Well, we actually did look at that, because we looked at the policies particularly, because we wanted to know when this came up first, in terms, I think it was in an email communication of a constituent's complaint, a citizen complaint. And we did look at, researched the policies. We didn't find any. What we did find is that some time ago, there was a subcommittee that had recommended that you allow children of staff to come to schools, and that, I think it was a few years back, and that report of that subcommittee was approved on the floor by the entire school committee, but there was no specific mention or motion, nor was there any policy established after that. And I think from my experiences and that of my colleagues in various districts, you need to have a policy for this. You must have a policy for this to dictate the terms, whether, you know, space permitting or whatever are the terms you need, particularly because this, the city does not accept school choice in. If you had accepted school choice in, it would have almost no financial impact on us, because they come in, you just claim them under school choice, and you can recover the cost. But if you don't, then you absolutely need to have a policy. And that's what we need to work on, is look at what we have and prepare a policy, maybe refer this to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, I'm fine referring to the policy, but I guess that was a good segue to my next question, the costs associated with this. Do we recoup these costs?
Well, this was a question that I asked today, so I don't have the answer yet. I have half the answer. When the child from an out-of-town comes in under school choice, you get, the portion of the state, you get that, obviously, and the portion, and then their town is obligated to send you their portion. And just like when Lowell pays, the city pays about 20% or so, whatever the number is, that is, if you, that's the allocation per child for, that is, who would be a resident of the city of Lowell. Obviously, since these are not coming from, they're coming from somewhere else, we're not getting the funding for those kids from the local part, and we're not getting it from their town either. Now, with respect to the state, I had asked Mr. Antonelli just this morning to look into the impact on the state level for the state funding, and I'm sure he didn't have time to look at it, because I just asked him a few hours ago to look into it.
Well, again, these motions are timely at a time when we're looking at, you know, at capacity or greater, we're looking at very full classrooms, and parents that want to send their children to neighborhood schools, particularly new parents looking at real estate. I mean, you go to some of these listings, and they're saying, you know, within a close proximity are your schools. And, you know, it's somewhat misleading, because people looking to buy a home in the city, and they see there's a school close by, they're going to naturally assume that they want to send their child, their children there. So I think that we need to continue to move in that direction to ensure that people have first opportunity to send their children to a school in their neighborhood, and as well as the costs associated with this. So is, I guess just to follow up on something Ms. Rossikowicz said, was are there Lowell students that are going out of the district because we don't have room at certain schools? Or you need to look?
I wouldn't know, but I heard from school committee members that they got complaints to that effect, that they're sending their kids out of town because they couldn't get their choice schools where, or the neighborhood school.
Okay, well, that's a greater concern, that this is, you know, that this is happening, not so much that teachers' children, but, I mean, we have teachers' children from out of the district taking places of Lowell Public School children, and, you know, that's a policy that we need to establish, that we need to straighten out, because that's, you know, that's just not, that's just not right. So how long do you anticipate? I mean, we're moving into...
Madam Chair, if I may, as I said, I have already lots of the information, because I anticipated that. We collected all this info about the individuals and so forth. We're going to collect the information with respect to the state. That should be fairly easy to know, how still state handles the funding for that. And my recommendation would be to move it immediately to subcommittee of a full policy to look into it and dictate a policy for us to work with.
Okay, that's good to know. I think we need to ensure, we need to reassure parents that, you know, they're moving into the city, and they want to raise their family here, that they're going to be guaranteed a spot in the Lowell Public School system. Thank you.
Ms. Leary?
No, I just think to expand upon what Mayor is saying, most of these folks are because they buy in real estate, there's not because there's a teacher's child from out of district. There's 37 kids district-wide. It's because our zones are horizontal. You've got students from Petucketville who are taking spots in the Highlands. So if you buy in a house on, I don't know, Campbell Drive, and you're opining you're going to go to the Bailey School perhaps, or if we're in Washington, you may not get that. Okay, so that's the really, that's the massive issue. So we can tinker around, and I think we should, because I'd like to know myself, but the bigger issue is, you have folks, for example, say you live near the Washington School, a lot of those folks think they're going to the Daley Middle School, but it's not a filter school. The Washington sits in the Highlands. I get calls all the time. I went to the Washington, I'm in fourth grade. How come I'm going to the Butler? I want to go to the Daley. That's where all my friends go. Well, that's not in that zone. That's, the bigger issues are zoning issues. 37 students, yes, it's important. Yes, we need to make sure we do the due diligence. Yes, the finances and a, you know, $170 million budget, we need to look at that. But the bigger issue that has the most impact is the zones and how we do them. It's also going to be the most tricky thing you do, because a lot of parents whose kids are in Petucketville like going to the Highland Schools because it fits into their work schedule. Ask any of them that do that. They actually choose it. I've got complaints from this person in particular, because their child had ended up going to a school in Petucketville, but they lived in the Highlands. And they're like, I lived in the Highlands, my grandparents lived in the Highlands. How come I can't go to the Daley? Well, there wasn't a spot. There was a spot in a particular middle school in Petucketville. That's hard to explain to someone, but we, each of us do it every single year. But so the end of the issue is rezoning it. You're going to have to probably grandfather people in. You're going to have to look at the parochial schools. They haven't even come to the picture yet. But wait till you start to sell somebody who's in a different zone, who's now going to be outzoned, and not going to get a ride to the Jean Dark, or the Immaculate, or St. Margaret's. That's going to be a massive issue, but that's where your dollar impact is. And I think it's important, we've had motions on that. I don't think you're going to be able to get that done this year, because it is massive. And everything you do has, you know, sometimes a hard effect to it. But let's really take a look at the whole thing, not tinker around with just one issue. Let's do it all at once. Thank you.
If there are no other comments, Ms. Mayor?
Just briefly, so on that issue, that, I know I filed a motion, everyone probably filed motions in the past, but I know that most recently, that I did ask you to look at neighborhood schools. And we are, I think it's important, we continue in that direction from so many perspectives. And it will take some time, but there is no time like today. And, you know, before we're beginning another school year, now is the preparation time to put something in place. Do you anticipate being able to initiate a process where certain, we understand some children have been going to a particular school for three years, they want to finish it out, and that makes all the sense. But, you know, and logistically, there'll be some hurdles that we have to, you know, cross over. But are you prepared to move forward in the next, in the next school year to begin that process, to try to streamline students, or align them, I should say, with neighborhood, neighborhood schools?
Madam Chair, if I may, yes, we have. We have already established as a part of the strategic plan, we established a task force that deals with transportation and zoning of schools. And that is right on their agenda. And as you know, the overall plan for all task forces is to report back to, before the end of June, so we can enable it for the new school year, whatever initiative they're working in. So, that's being worked on. What we, this smaller, much smaller issue that Mr. Leary is pointing out, which is a result of your motions, is somehow a part of it, but it's also very separate, because it's an issue of policies. School districts in Massachusetts are designed to accept their own schools. We, I as a superintendent, of course, I can't speak when this is done before me, but I as a superintendent, I'm obligated to only allow students that live in Lowell or as dictated by school committee policy. That's why I was referring to.
Thank you.
So, if there are no other comments, we entertain a motion to send this to the policy subcommittee for further discussion and reports from the administration. By Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes, that concludes those two motions of the evening. The third motion of the evening by Ms. Rossigowitz. And Ms. Scott requests the superintendent perform a review of all school assignment process to ensure that the district is in compliance with existing policies, and include a plan to reassign those students improperly placed into schools outside of their school zones. No second necessary, ladies. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very similar to the other motion. It was brought forward with, from a couple of parents' concerns, constituents, that they were aware of students that were placed outside of their neighborhood zone schools into a completely different zone. They began schools in one zone, as Mr. Leary mentioned, the Washington School was one that was brought up, and ended up at a school, the Daley Middle School. And the question was brought up, is how many students has this been allowed to occur? You know, I don't know if it's parents complained, and then we bent the policy, or what, I don't even know if it really exists. It's just a complaint that was brought forward to me. And I'd like to see if we can get a report to see if, you know, the policies have been followed in the district. And we certainly have set policies on the zones that students are supposed to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Rossigowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and I think, going back to Mr. Leary's comments on the last motion, you know, a lot of great points were made, and really tie into this motion. And again, it goes back to, you know, if you have a neighborhood preference in a particular zone, and a child from outside of that zone is placed in and takes that spot, that's really, it's unfair. It's inequitable. So, to take a look at these policies, to take a look at these processes, to ensure that we're in full compliance, would be truly appreciated by our Lowell public schools' parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossigowitz. Further discussion on this motion. Seeing on, do we have a motion? Yep. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries. Oh, that's right, there is no second necessary. Okay, so that concludes motions of this evening. We will now proceed to the next section of the agenda, and that is subcommittees. We have a curriculum, a subcommittee report of the meeting on Tuesday, oh, just last night, Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. Ms., I'd like to recognize the chairwoman of that subcommittee, Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would say, I know we are still collecting some information on attendees and whatnot, so if we could postpone this to the next meeting, I'll give the report, as well as have the written minutes for us as well.
Great. So, a motion to defer this to the next meeting by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossigowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. That concludes subcommittee reports for the evening. We'll now move on to the next section, which was reports of the superintendent. First report of the evening is a personnel report. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first one is the item number ten, which is the personal report prepared by the HR office. And I would entertain any question, if you have any, otherwise I would, you know, kind of ask you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Comments, questions on the personnel report?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion is accepted as a report of progress, and we'll place it on file. Next report is a strategic plan update. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick update on this one, as you know, we had a, we launched this a while ago, a few weeks ago. And we had some significant community outreach. Over three hundred people have participated one way or another in the process. And we had the first public launch on October fourteenth. And we had additional meetings on October twenty-eighth and November twelfth. There's intensive, very extensive newsletters and informational emails going to hundreds of community members. And we constantly meet with different groups. Last night, we were with a different group yet, and talking about the strategic plan. And I think we also have a web presence for that strategic plan to try to inform people. We maintain, we, as a part of the process, as I said earlier, we developed, we put together several task forces that address some of these priorities that the school district work with. These are, this is not an exhaustive list. I'm sure if you have any opinions, or sometimes I know some of the community members came with various opinions. We added a different task force. We did some changes to accommodate some of the recommendations. But we think that these task forces pretty much, you know, put together, they combine most of our priorities that we work with. And all these task forces have at least one person, sometimes two, representing the school system, but the majority of all participants are community members. From, and these groups have been meeting, some on their own, in different places. But we also hold what we call open hours, allowing people to use our facilities to hold their meeting. The last one was, I think, just about November twelfth, and was heavily attended as well by several of the people. We're expecting to have these reports from these people, which we will put forward and send them to the steering committee that we put together by several community members. And the plan, right now, the schedule is to come back to the school committee before the end of June and present a report by the steering committee to the school committee for their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for that report.
You're welcome.
Questions on the report? Ms. Scott?
Just a quick comment, that the meetings were well-attended, but they were still looking for participants. So, if you're looking to volunteer, I would suggest they reach out to the school department. They are definitely still looking for more people to participate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further comments, questions? Seeing on, entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossigowitz. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, the report is accepted and placed on file. There are now nineteen responses to motions, some date back to a couple of years. Entertain a motion to take nineteen together, and then have discussion on individual. Motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Take all the motion responses together. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, that motion carries on the response, on the nineteen responses, members. Comments, Mr. Conway?
I think that there's been quite a frustration over the years with the school committee when we take a look at motions. And, you know, sometimes we put a motion on, and we expect it to be taken care of in a timely fashion. That didn't always, always happen. And I think what happens going forward, you take a look at some of these motions, you almost forget which motions you put on, because they went so long. Some of them were two years and three years, and in some cases, even four years. So, I certainly applaud the superintendent in cleaning this up. And I would certainly hope that going forward, we continue in this fashion, because I think that will certainly make things a lot smoother and a lot cleaner with our motions. Because they start to, they start to, when we're talking about putting a motion on, quite often you'll hear somebody say, well, I put a motion like that on a couple of years ago. And then you take a look at it, and nothing was actually done with it. So, again, I applaud you for that, and I think that it's a good idea to keep this up. Thank you.
Mr. Conway? Ms. Scott, and then Mr. Gendron.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick comment about one of the motions that are on the agenda. And I know it's definitely of interest to a lot of parents that are out there. It's the motion on delayed starts, and a lot of staff as well. So, I just would like to make sure that that's relayed out, that there is a report in here. I don't know if you could discuss it for a minute, but that there's a report that you are going to be doing delayed starts.
This is item number thirteen, Mr. Superintendent, or Mr. Antonelli?
I'll turn it over to Ms. Antonelli.
Just to, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, if you're going to speak on it first, it's your motion, I don't know if you want to?
She did. She just wants to get an update.
I just want an update, just so that it's out there.
And I think it's good, but I think we need to coordinate with the city on that, too. It's obvious when you guys do that, you're making a coordination to see if those schools are clean, because the city may have other priorities. So, in an effect, when you do that, and it's probably something you already know anyway, but you're going to coordinate with, I guess it's Ralph Snow, in terms of making sure schools are clean. They may have other priorities. So, in addition to the funding, which is also important with the budget, we should be sitting down with them and saying, here's something we'd like to implement, what do you guys think? Because they may be, the way I always understood it, they get to the highways first, right? The main roads, and then they're going in to clean the schools. So, before you start a two-hour delay in things, we've got to make sure they're in line with that, or are capable of doing it. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Antonelli, do you have an update on that report?
If I may just answer that, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely agreed. The, when we do make decisions on closing or delay, it's always with the city. I mean, or in other districts, it's always with the town, DPW. I think this only addresses, when it is okay by the city to delay, then we would do it under this way. If the city says, no, don't delay, close, we will close. You're welcome. Mr. Antonelli?
Yes, thank you. So, effective this year, we will use a two-hour delay, weather permitting. The main concern, obviously, when deciding this, is the safety of the children and the staff. And that would be something that is a very serious decision for us to make. Generally speaking, when you're talking about a two-hour delay, that decision is typically made at four or five o'clock in the morning. And we have a team set up to review the conditions of the streets in the city, including speaking with the DPW and the police department, et cetera. If we do decide to delay school by two hours, that means that all staff, with the exception of the custodians, would report to school two hours later. All staff and parents of students would receive notification of these plans pretty soon. And if there was a two-hour delay, we would notify them on the day of that two-hour delay by the way of EdConnect, the telephone system that we have used for sending messages to parents, as well as the staff members. So, we'll be, we'll be implementing this policy. And one of the things I wanted to say is that by implementing this policy, it gives the school department some flexibility in meeting the requirements, the state's requirements of children attending school for one hundred and eighty days a year. So, for example, if we had another winter like we did this past year, and there were six or seven days where you had to make a decision to cancel school, if one of those days, or two of those days, you were able to have a delayed opening, then you would meet the requirement of the state. Because if you have a delayed opening, it still counts as a full day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Antonelli. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick questions. Somewhat cycling back to Mr. Leary's concerns. So, you're putting this forth as a recommendation for us to approve moving forward? Am I understanding that? That this will now be an option during this upcoming season? To allow a two-hour delay as an option?
Mr. Superintendent?
Okay. So, I believe the question isn't so much about talking with the DPD the day of the storm. Have the conversations already happened with them in general, that this is a direction we're moving in? Just kind of overall? Or will they be hearing about it when they see this on TV? Because you know they're all watching.
Ms. Antonelli?
The city manager had a meeting this past week, and school department employees were there. And they informed the school, the city manager, that the school department was planning on implementing a two-hour delay, if the conditions were right.
Were there any concerns expressed at that meeting?
I did not hear any concerns coming back through the school department employees.
I don't know of any. I'm just curious to make sure that we, you know, have that conversation with the city, so that they're aware of it. Secondarily, contacts have been made to all of the before and after-school programs, I assume?
Those contacts would be made when we talk with the parents, and when we're talking with the staff members. We have had some communication just today through the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services about canceling afternoon events for certain programs, if we have a delayed opening.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes, Carolyn Roche-Low, our extended-time coordinator, will be reaching out to the programs. She actually has a meeting with Mr. Antonelli tomorrow to discuss the cancellation. That would be included in the message to families. But we'll also make sure that our before and after-school providers, who support our students in the schools, are fully aware of this as well.
Because my biggest, I mean, the afternoon programming, obviously, is one thing. But our early-morning programs that open at our school sites at six a.m., those generally are filled with children whose parents need to get to work. So, and I don't know if, you know, there are a couple of different agencies I know that provide services. But I don't know what their availability will be to find a different site for the morning, if the schools aren't available. Is that something that we're going to ask them to do? You know, in order to accommodate parents who don't have, don't have any other options?
Well, I, I'm not understanding it very well. Because if we do a delay, it's probably going to put the same disadvantage on the parents as if we were closing. Because the delay, as if we were to close. Because in the past, I think, my understanding what had happened in Lowell is that they would favor closing over delay. So, when you close, the same disadvantage, the same hardship is put on those parents, because then they have to find a new place for their preschool programs, if they have to go to work. So, now if we delay by two hours, the same hardship is put on them. Or am I misunderstanding?
Well, my question is, is that if we delay for two hours, if a parent has a plan that they drop their child off at seven o'clock, say, for an eight o'clock start time, so they've got an hour covered by a program, a community program, then they go into school, the regular eight o'clock start time. So, now that parent still has to get the child to school, but doesn't have the early morning care. Most cases, when we do a full-day closure, most of, I believe, most of the nonprofits who run these programs have full-day care that they offer at one of their own sites. I mean, again, you know, it's no big secret, I work in community teamwork. This is one of the programs, it's not my program, I don't run it. But I know that when there's a, a school is closed, other buildings are open up at our, whether it's the Phoenix Ave facility, or various places, so that parents still can drop off their kids for a safe day, you know, either way. I don't know, I mean, I suspect we should talk with those partners to see how we can accommodate and ensure that parents who need to drop off their kids, because there are parents who are still going to need to work, and who, if they don't have the option, are not going to get paid for that day. And that's money they can't afford to lose. And that's money they can't afford to lose. So I just would like us to see our partners involved in this conversation before we make a final decision.
We definitely will.
Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so we've talked about delays quite a bit over the last couple of years, especially with all the snow that we've had. And the feedback we've always gotten is that delays don't work in Lowell because of communication issues and because of our demographics. Kids get left on the street even when there's no school and they're out there with, you know, a little jacket on, they're freezing for a couple of hours until school opens. So I'm wondering if, you know, do we think that's changed? And maybe Assistant Superintendent Durkin might have a comment on this because she has that, a little of that history. But I know we've had that discussion before, is that because of our demographics and because of, you know, communication issues in Lowell, that delays have been problematic because, you know, kids get left at the school anyway.
That is, that has been a problem in the past. One of the things that we have been doing more lately is utilizing our translation services in the Connected Module so that for every parent that has an email, the email will be sent to them in their language. If their phones, you know, are connected, then we will try to translate in multiple languages each time we do that. It does, it has been from a school's perspective. I know I would wait for students to arrive and even on snow days, sometimes students did, did show up. I honestly, over the last few years, believe it has gotten better with notification and families, but I know that that was a concern in the past.
So, and I'm all in favor of delays if we can pull it off. If we can pull it off as an option to canceling the day, I think it's a good option if the weather's appropriate. But I think that's one more thing we should throw on the fire to think about, making sure that we have a system in place where we can properly communicate and deal with kids who might be left on the street corner anyway. Mayor, I had a couple of other, if we're not, I don't know if we're done with this particular issue, I had a couple of other things.
I think we, I think there's just a couple of loose ends. How are we going to, how do you want to handle that, Mrs. Superintendent and Madam Assistant Superintendent?
I think we.
Follow-up report on, to respond to these questions of before and after?
I think as Ms. Connie Martin pointed out, this has to come back when we decide to actually do that. We looked at the report to say, "Can we delay?" We looked at the language issues of how to inform people of the various languages and I think we found a solution to do that, to providing written translations for the emails and for even, even for the calls. We have for the major languages, some people can translate a message and send it out, pre-recorded. We also talked to the LRTA. We also know, as Mr. Leary asked earlier, we will only do this after it's cleared by the city for any specific day. But I think Ms. Connie Martin brought a very important point and we'll talk about, when we tighten up. This was the report, can it be done? It can be done from our point of view, but we will, if we decide to bring it as a matter of policy, that this is what we're going to do, we bring it back to the school committee, we will have all of those answers then. And if we feel that it's, you know, we shouldn't be bringing it up, then you won't hear about it again.
Okay. So do you think you'll be bringing this back in a timely manner, knowing that we are in New England and that we have escaped any snowstorms at this point? I just don't want to send any mixed messages out, out to the parents that may be watching right now, that there may be a delay and maybe they're not and they'll be saying, "Well, why isn't there a delay?" So.
How about next meeting? Two weeks from now? Will it bring it back?
That's, that's a good omen not to get any more snow. Okay, so motion to refer this report back to the superintendent with, to provide additional information or recommendations for the meeting in two weeks. All those in favor of that motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion passes. Mr. Gendron, on additional responses from the superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two things I wanted to bring up. First, the letter that you sent to Commissioner Chester regarding the park. I noticed there's no date on the letter. I'm just wondering if that actually got to him in time? Because it sounds like he made a decision yesterday.
Mr. Superintendent?
On that one, as you know, yesterday they made a decision that they were going to go with the, with a modified MCAS II or Park II, whatever you want to call it, and that it will have, it will be mandated that by 19, FY19 is going to be all computerized. So while the letter may have seemed now not necessarily with respect to Park per se relevant, because the decision was made not to go with Park, but it is still relevant for the computerized Park. I think we still need to send that one. We'll put a date on it.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask actually that the, Mr. Mayor to sign this as a school committee chair and have it sent by the, by the chair, by the committee because the motion was the committee to read. Again, on that note, if you'd allow me, this is, this is a very serious discussion we need to have because FY19 is around the corner, you know, when you start talking about, this is such a, such a requirement and we need to come up with a plan. We need to come up with a three-year plan. That's all we've got, about two and a half really, plan on how we are going to get ourselves ready to be able to administer this. It requires bandwidth, it requires more equipment, it requires more people to support on the technical side and it requires more teachers on the instructional technology coordinator. This is not a simple matter. And we're going to have to come up with a plan immediately and bring it up to the school committee and see how we're going to, how we're going to fulfill that plan.
And I certainly hope that the legislature and the commissioner are planning to fund this because this is a, this is a huge outlay of money for, I mean, as, we've made great progress in the past couple of years in technology and in the Lowell public schools, but we're still short, woefully short where we should be now. Lay her on top, you know, a digital implementation of the MCAS 2.0 and we have real issues, financial issues to get that equipment. As you pointed out, teachers and professional development so that everybody knows how to use it. I'm very concerned about this and we are going to have to have a plan and I think we need to reach out to our representatives in the legislature and let them know that if we're going to implement this, if this is the decision, then there's got to be funding that goes along with it to support it.
Yeah. On last Friday, we were made aware of what the recommendation is going to be. It was presented to the urban school, urban schools, we were all the superintendents, and it was presented by Mr. Russell Johnson, the deputy commissioner. And that concern came out really clear from various superintendents. And I, I had, I made him really aware of that, that this is going to be a serious hardship for Lowell and I invited him to come to Lowell. So he has committed to come, has already confirmed his visit to us on January the 6th. He will be coming to visit a couple of our schools and we will have a long meeting discussing this, the impact of this. So we're going to try to get our act together to make sure we have the, to measure the impact that's going to happen to Lowell. Where are we going to, where are we going to be so that we will be able to communicate it to them? As far as the funding, so far, the only thing that I have heard is that they said, "Well, you could, you could try to use some of the E-Rate money," which we know we're already using for that. They did not give us any indication at all of any plan to, to fund this. So.
When, when he comes, it would be good if the school committee could get an opportunity to meet with him.
Yeah, I will invite the school committee, if anybody would like to join us for that discussion.
Thank you.
Anything else on item number 26 regarding Park Test? Mr. Leary?
And I think just to expand on, I thought I had heard even like anecdotally that they were thinking of putting a bond statewide to fund this type of infrastructure because this is not only an urban issue, a lot of suburban schools are not, are woefully inadequate. So I think if you can, I think we need to get together as a group to make sure we send that message and make sure we articulate that to the, to the reps in the state senate or that this is something that they can join with not only urban communities, but the suburban ones too. It's, it's, it's going to be a massive problem and as you know and mentioned, it shut you down. Here in Lowell, it shut us down. It really, we just could not do it. Thank you.
Further discussion on this particular motion response? Seeing none. Mr. Gendron, do you have something, another?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to talk about number 19, which is my motion regarding maintenance of grounds. It's also related to Ms. Rossikowicz's motion, number 14, regarding maintenance and another one I had on there, 22, regarding Lowell high school maintenance. There's a lot of issues regarding maintenance that are on this list and specifically on the grounds, and right now it's, we're heading into winter, so it's less of an issue, but there's, there's a wide variety of care that's given to the grounds of our schools. And, you know, I think it's a relatively small investment of time and effort to, to keep our grounds clean, you know, to keep the weeds cut and keep the, you know, the litter picked up. I, you know, I read your response and basically the head custodian has, is in charge of, you know, the maintenance of the grounds of a particular school, but I think that more needs to be done to make sure that our grounds are kept nicely. I mean, that's our public face of Lowell public schools is what our schools look like. And several times last summer, I drive by a school, there's weeds all over the place, you know, going crazy, even at the end of the school year. And I've, in my visits to the schools, you know, around the grounds, there's, it just looks terrible. And that just sends a really bad image, I think, to people who will visit the schools and all the children who attend those schools. So I really would like to see going forward as we head into the spring, a really strong effort and a plan to make sure that those, at the very minimum, you know, the weeds are cut and the litter's picked up every day, you know, so that, so that the grounds look sharp.
Mr. Antonelli?
I agree with you, Mr. Gendron. I think when the public sees a messy yard, they assume that the schools inside are messy as well. And I think it's the first thing that people see when they ride by. So we have to do a better job of making sure that the outside of the schools are kept in good condition. So that means more observations, more visits to the school and some feedback back to the senior custodians to make sure that they're clean. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
There's also, I think, a motion last week by Ms. Scott, I think, the bigger issues, what we need to do on an annual basis is talk about the ticket items. And I think what, we had this issue when we had the, maybe four years ago, where we actually walked around with the joint subcommittee of the city council and looked at, you know, water bubblers and bags and all that. We're starting to go back to that area. So what we need to do is really for the school committee to have that on an annual basis. That motion Ms. Scott had is something that we should be looking at really every month. What is the status of open tickets? How many are being addressed or not being addressed? That's equally as important as a custodian cutting the grass because we're not, the school department is not allowed to fix, you know, water bubblers, they're just not allowed to do that. And putting a black bag around a water bubbler, you know, it's, people kind of laugh at it, but if you see it, it's embarrassing. And it shows a problem for the school. So I think these motions that, the ticket items we set up with the city, you guys and the city side, we should be working together. You should bring a report to the school committee saying, "Here's how many have been resolved, here's how many have been outstanding and how, for how long." Because I think that's something we need to be diligent on because easily, once you forget about it, it will go by the wayside. You've got to continuously be doing that repetitively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Ms. Antonelli?
I agree with everything you just said as well and, you know, we have been meeting, we have been talking with the school principals who have expressed the same concern to us. So we've started to review all of the open orders that we have in the system. We've sent that back to the school principals so that they could update them because there were some that were closed, but were not indicated that they had been closed. And the director of facilities and operations and I have a meeting with Ralph Snow and, and his counterparts at the city on Friday to review those open work orders and to make sure that the communication is kept open. That's the important thing, that we make sure communication is open. So if we see a problem, we bring it to their attention and they have time to rectify that problem.
Thank you very much. Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo, I made the motion on the open work order, so obviously I agree that that's a real priority, but I would just like to echo my colleague's sentiments, Mr. Gendron, that this is beyond just a work order issue. This is a regular maintenance issue at the schools with the weeds growing up outside the building. It did, a lot of them just look like they're in disrepair. So this is a management issue, I believe. It's not a work order issue. So I look forward to that being resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Further discussion on these particular items? Seeing none. Members have questions on any other motion responses from the superintendent? Mr. Leary?
Did we ever receive, I saw on the packet, did we ever receive a response from the state delegation on the motion we had about the newcomers program and the funding? Okay. I mean, I think it's something that, again, we need to go back at that and we probably need to tie in the city council and actually probably when you have your, we have, what, an annual meeting with the legislative state, the state folks, really bring that up again and really go back to Nikki Song. I know we wrote all, we write a lot of letters, man, but it gets to the point, I think, we, Mayor and I, you and I had a joint motion as well, we wrote another letter. I think at this point, it gets to, you're not hearing us. And I know, we, I think an aide called, you know, from, from Congresswoman Song's office, I think, when the Jean Franco, the former superintendent Jean Franco, said they want to talk about it. But you're going to go into a tight budget year and a lot of it's going to be, you know, not a lot of it, some part of it's going to be due to newcomers coming in. And the cost, we've all known, it's like, it takes about 20 to 22 grand per newcomer when we're getting about 11 to 12 grand. So there's a difference there that we're being required to pick up. I think we do a better job than other school systems doing it because we have the talent to educate the students, but we need to hire more of that talent to make sure we're doing it fairly. And taking from other parts of the district to fund it is not appropriate. So I think we need to think of a, more of a creative way, probably get a little louder with it and maybe demand it because it's not, whatever we're doing is, it's, nothing's happened. And I don't expect something to happen this budget year because it's going to take a long time for it to occur, but at some point, we need to see some type of like, okay, we acknowledge that it costs you an extra, you know, 10 grand to educate the student, we're going to make up some part of that or help you with some type of resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree. Any, any other questions on any of the number of other motion responses? Mr. Gendron?
Yeah, just following up on Mr. Leary's point there, on your quarterly report on motions, I don't know if we've got to that yet, but it's relevant to the newcomers. Items number 13 and 14, which are the motion that Mr. Mayor Elliott and Mr. Leary co-authored on newcomers and the same night I had a motion asking for a report on receiver communities for newcomers in Massachusetts, how they are chosen and the numbers in recent years. I don't think that was ever completed. It says completed, but I don't recall getting that information. And I think that would be worthwhile to understand, you know, how are receiver communities chosen? What kind of numbers does Lowell get versus the other receiver communities in the, in the state? Just so we can be armed with that information because this is, this is something we're going to have to deal with for, for, you know, months and years to come. Making sure that we get funded adequately to deal with these newcomers because, you know, I think it's a great thing. I think it's appropriate for Lowell to be a newcomer community because that's our heritage. But at the same time, we can't do it for free. You know, we need to get the funding to be able to do that because it stresses every other student and teacher in the, in the district when we have to, you know, force 100 new people into our, into our schools someplace. So anyway, I think, I would like to suggest that we take those items, number 13 and 14, out of the completed column and keep them on the, on the agenda so that we can follow that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gendron, this, this was actually a lot of the numbers of how, you know, because the main motion was talking, I think, on the numbers received and I think those was, that was presented during the report that Ms. Falla, Ms. Falla, or Dr. Falla has presented, remember when we were talking about the ELL programs? Yeah, we might have had that. That's where the confusion is. I don't think we ever spoke about how are these people, how are these communities determined as, you know, receiver, what, how are they selected? I don't think we ever talked about that. That part, you're correct. But the other parts, I think the numbers were provided. But happy to look at it again. I'm not sure whether we're going to be able to get you any information because that goes back to the federal government. I'm not really sure whether they're, they shared that information, not even with states, let alone with us. But we'll ask if, you know, I just don't know whether we're going to be able to get you an answer.
Can I suggest, I think this is going to be an ongoing concern and issue, so can I suggest that we send us to the appropriate subcommittee because I think a full discussion is warranted on, on numbers and policy and procedures and, as well as the cost. And I agree with you, Mr. Gendron. I think we need to move forward with, you know, all the tools in our belt to make sure we have answers and we're not just making statements that were bursting at the seams and that, you know, we're, that we're receiving on the average of 300 to 400 students and the cost associated with that and the impact that it has on the school system. So, you know, if someone could suggest a particular subcommittee to send this to? Ms. Martin?
I don't actually have an opinion on subcommittee, maybe finance might be the easiest.
Unless you can just compile a report, Mr. Superintendent, I understand some of this may not be, some of it's got to be available on the selection process from the state department, but...
What I'd recommend is that wherever the conversation goes, I'd recommend including the International Institute, which is the resettlement organization functioning here in the city of Lowell, who would be able to give us the most up-to-date information. I'd certainly encourage the school department to become involved in there. They have, I know, at least a quarterly update where they bring together all the different organizations in the city to talk about burgeoning, you know, refugee issues. So, wherever it goes, finance or wherever else, I would certainly encourage having them as one of the key players to explain to us the situation.
That makes sense. I did attend a quarterly meeting a while ago, and the state department does select sort of gateway communities that have organizations that can help with the resettlement, but I think we need, we need a complete...
I think the finance subcommittee makes sense. I'm kind of...
Ms. Dernken?
Yes, I know John Decoto from the Family Resource Center recently did attend one of those meetings, and we did provide some of that data to the superintendent and team, so I will ask John to make sure that, that we can get some of that information to you, which shows how many students, how many families are estimated to come into the city and surrounding area.
And it'd be good to know where they, where they come from, because that has an impact on what translators we need as well.
Even as you say that, I don't know if we might want to send it to Student Support Services as a subcommittee, that might make more sense.
So, you did have the right subcommittee, I knew you could come up.
I know it's not mine.
Okay, so entertain a motion to send both items 13 and 14 and the quarterly report to the Students of Services Subcommittee? Ms. Abrams?
Yes, since the ELL department comes under curriculum, I think it might be a joint, no, seriously, a joint committee meeting that, because John is working with Dr. Cheer in my office all the time.
So, who chairs that Subcommittee? Oh, Ms. Martin does. Okay, so, motion to send this to both Support Services, and I suspect this will be a full discussion of the committee anyway, but motion to send these, these items regarding newcomers, costs, et cetera, to Student Support Services along with the Curriculum Subcommittee? Joint, so it'll be a joint Subcommittee? Motion by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, second by Mr. Conway. All those in favor of that motion, signify by say and aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Still on questions, concerns, discussion on responses, motion responses by the superintendent? Seeing none, entertain a motion to accept the responses and place on file as reports of progress by Mr. Conway, second by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor of that motion, signify by say and aye, and the opposed, motion carries. These 17, as I'm told, thank you, Mayor, for correcting the number, these 17 motion responses will be accepted and placed on file. That concludes responses, so we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is a vote to remove agenda items from quarterly report on motions. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I will amend that, in light of this discussion, that we remove item 13 and 14 and consider the rest that are completed to be removed, and, and some of them are obsolete, as you can see, you had a chance to read that, and so that we can move on and focus on the ones that are not completed yet.
Very good. I want to echo, Mr. Conway, I appreciate the fact you're trying to clean up all these motions, so they're not lingering, and that we can stay abreast of, of current issues, so, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions about motions that are removed from the report. The first one I have a question about is the parent groups motion. I really have no issue with it being removed from the report, but my only question is whether or not we're in compliance right now with the student advisory groups at all the schools.
Mr. Superintendent?
It's number four under the office of the superintendent on the first page. Parent groups. Yeah, okay. No, my, my question was just whether or not we are in compliance with having a student, a parent advisory group at all, at each of the schools, a school site council, I'm sorry.
I think we, this was responded before me, and I, I'll look into it again, but I have, I will go look at it. What I know is that we are in compliance, but I'll be happy to have a second look at it. If you, if you think we're not somewhere, and you want to tell me where I'm not, that would help my search.
A form was sent out to all of the schools, I know that, asking, you asked for that information from each of the schools, the curriculum office, and I'm not sure whether or not you got responses from all of them, we didn't see that here. So, I don't know if that's already information that you have in your office. And the other two motions I have a question about are under the curriculum office, number three and number eight. The first one is a motion on foreign language, a plan to bring back foreign language to our middle schools.
Number three for the curriculum, okay.
Curriculum instruction assessment.
Let me just go to it and read it. If you don't have it, can I, you want to give me?
No, I don't have it in front of me, but I can speak to it.
Let me read it if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great.
Motion number three, foreign language, request the superintendent develop a plan to reinstate middle school foreign language instruction for the 2015-16 school year.
Okay, so, we did have a meeting and discussed that motion, or actually, no, I'm sorry, we did a report, I worked with the high school on that, Mr. Jarvis, and he had given a whole report about how we would move forward, what languages would we be talking of. That would be a big consideration when we get to budget as well, what are the materials we would need, and which direction we should go. So, I think that there was a report towards the end, it was in June, I think that I presented the report from Stephen Jarvis at the high school. Not to say that he wasn't in favor of it, I think in looking at, if I recall, back from the, the notes, very in favor of it, thinking it's a wonderful idea, especially to get children when they're younger involved in different languages, but it just really, is it feasible for us to do at this point? And that was how that was left in June. I mean, we can dig deeper again, if you like.
Right, I just didn't think that the, it was, just to report out that we can't afford it, I mean, the intent of the motion was really to develop a plan, I guess by, maybe by putting the 15-16 school year, I limited the motion, I don't know, but I mean, my intent was really to get a long-term plan at least, that we would work towards bringing foreign language. I mean, our students are certainly at a disadvantage with our neighboring communities that are all offering middle school foreign language right now. So, I would not consider that motion completed. And the other motion is number eight on the middle school lyceum, which my understanding was that it was moving forward with long-term strategic planning type of considerations.
Actually, the response to that motion, if I recall, was we would do a feasibility study to look at the different options. So, that's something in my office that I have our mathematics coordinator and our ELA coordinators looking into. So, we will report out on that when that is complete. So, there is a feasibility study being...
Okay, so I just, I wouldn't consider it completed in the report at this point in time. Yep, thank you.
Which one is that, number eight?
Mr. Conway, further comments on the quarterly report?
Through, I have a question on one of the motions and the status, through you to the superintendent. The, the one on the SWEAR program, request the superintendent to examine the feasibility of implementing the SWEAR program, stand with everyone against rape at the high school, is that going to be implemented at the high school? You know of?
Ms. Dernken?
Actually, that one should not be marked complete. I have had communication with Mr. Martin and Mr. Robinson, and we're going, we're going to investigate if that can be done. So, that must be an error, that should not have been marked complete.
Is it marked complete?
We were going to actually try to provide a report on that by the December 16th meeting.
Okay. What number? I'm sorry? What number is that?
You have to do it by section, then, number?
Oh, I, I've got page nine, so whatever that means. Okay, page nine, what's the number? Page nine, number four. Okay. Take a note of that. I talked to Headmaster Martin about that, which I think he thought that was a pretty good, a pretty good program, and it sounds like it is, it is spreading throughout the, throughout the state, and I think it could be very effective. I think anything like that, obviously, is, is, is just another, another way of, of making things safer for, for all involved. Thank you.
Further comments on the quarterly report? Seeing none, motion to accept the report along with amendments by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Larry, all those in favor signify by say and aye, and the opposed, motion passes. That concludes new business. That concludes, we have one more item, and that is an executive session. I'll state the purpose, the purpose is to discuss UTL collective bargaining and grievances and litigation update. Comments, questions? Motion to go into executive session and then adjourn from executive session, from open session. Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Ross Sikowitz.
Mr. Mayor? On the motion, you know, poor Ben came down here to see a difference of opinion, and we disappointed him tonight. I wonder if maybe we could invite him into the executive session? He's bound to see one then.
Ben, I reassure you, you will not be disappointed. But thank you for attending, and I hope it was a good experience for you, and I'm sure feel free to contact any of us if you have any follow-up questions on any of these agenda items. Further discussion, I'm moving into executive session. Seeing none, roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Seven yays, motion approved, we'll now move into executive session and adjourn thereafter.